Ellen is here.
Yeah, I'll check on that.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order.
I'm not sure why it's just...I'll check on that.
Welcome to the City Council Work Session. The mayor is still in DC attending a Revolution conference, and that's why I'm sitting here. We have two items today to discuss: a Sustainability Commission work plan and the Cal Young Neighborhood Boundaries. And Babe is here to start...well, I guess I'll turn it over to the city manager, and then he will tell us.
Thank you very much, and I'm going to turn over to Babe O'Sullivan, our Sustainability Manager, to coordinate the work session.
Thank you, President Taylor, and members of council. It's that time of year again when the Sustainability Commission comes before you to present its work plan for the current fiscal year and to report on success from the previous year. And with us today, we have Chair of the Commission, which is Josh Scove, and newly-elected Vice Chair Kathy Jaworski. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to them to make their presentation.
All right. Thank you, Babe. And I want to thank Babe in front of everyone here for providing excellent staff support, and we've gotten a lot of good staff support from others. Matt McCray and Kelly Osborne and others have done a great job on our behalf, on your behalf. I also want to thank my new Vice Chair, Kathy Jaworski. We've had a little bit of turnover on the Commission. We actually will have had five seats turnover over the course of about six months, so that's a fair amount of turnover. And I'm glad to have Kathy helping me provide some continuity and give us more process as we go forward. Now, I have a number of opening comments, and then we'll leave it up to Q and A, but I want to make sure that we put a number of comments just to frame this discussion and really the whole coming year of interaction between the Sustainability Commission and council. My final opening remark is just to say hello to Aria and Jasmine, my daughters, who I think will be watching this at home later. So we've got an ambitious work plan and appreciate hearing from you about how best to pursue it and how best to communicate with you about it. I'd like to emphasize a few points about what you're going to hear from us over the coming year and then discuss the work plan. We're going to continue to frame our input to you in terms of a broader sustainability vision. The input we provided to you last April on Envision Eugene seemed to have value and was well-received and helped everyone discuss the broader sustainability context for the issues. We hope to do more of that. We're also going to be much more proactive and frequent visitors to council. Consider this pleasant warning, to provide more consistent feedback and get out more in front on some of the policy issues. And we'll be emphasizing the social equity and economic dimensions to the policies we discuss with you. Those are things that I think we have needed to do a little more. Now, the work of the Sustainability Commission for fiscal year 12 reflects a renewed focus on important themes carried forward from recent years. With major land use and transportation initiatives still taking shape, the Commission will be looking at how to integrate these initiatives to meet the sustainability goals already adopted by council. Those goals, specific to reducing greenhouse gas emissions and fossil fuel use, as well as adaptation to climate change and rising energy prices, are embodied in the Community Climate and Energy Action Plan, which you heard about last week, heard more about last week. And climate and energy together provide much of the working framework for the Commission. More about that in a few minutes. Now, as you can see in the work plan, I know you all have this in front of you, so I won't go through all of the details, but priority is with the decisions council must make on land use and transportation, especially Envision Eugene, the Transportation System Plan Update, and MX. The Commission's role in the coming year will be to reinforce the importance of council goals, goals that council has already set, the importance of being faithful to those goals, and the implications of fidelity or infidelity on those counts. The Commission will continue its role of highlighting the connections between policy decisions and their impacts on social equity, economic, and environmental concerns. There are also some important building blocks that you see in the work plan that may not involve high-profile council decisions but deserve Commission attention, such as implementation of 20-minute neighborhoods, the role of the pedestrian bicycle master plan, and bike and ped travel in general in land use and transportation decisions, regional planning issues and sustainability initiatives, and E-Web's Integrated Electric Resource Plan. I will spend more on those now, but you see them reflected in the work plan, sort of the second-tier priority. Communication efforts are vital to the success of the Commission's work, both in advising council and city staff and informing the Eugene community. The Commission will provide more frequent feedback to council by offering comments during public hearings and forums. The Commission also recognizes the importance of collaboration with other advisory bodies and community groups. We will be creating or, in most cases, actually deepening our working relationships with the following groups and possibly others: the Human Rights Commission, the Transportation Community Resource Group, or TCRG, the Planning Commission through CLUTAC, the Coordinated Land Use and Transportation Action Committee, that's our joint committee with the Planning Commission, the Neighborhood Leaders Council, E-Web, and the MPC, Metropolitan Planning Committee. Sorry, Metropolitan Policy Committee. The matrix that you have in the work plan and the packet calls out the intersection of primary commission activities and the focus areas for the coming year. Activities include providing policy advice and communication, engaging in outreach, education, and collaboration, focusing on equity considerations, and articulating the economic benefits and implications of major policy decisions. I realize for most of you, and I've realized this over the last couple of years, that I am a member of the Sustainability Commission, but I'm also a businessperson, a co-owner of a business that's been around for more than a decade, and I think we need to do a better job on economic issues. That actually has surfaced in the Commission, and we'll do that more over the coming year. Now, I'd like to take the final few minutes to reflect on where the Commission has been since its inception and where it's going this year, which is the final year of my term and the home stretch of my time as Chair. No cheering, please. I speak in support of the Commission here, but what follows is from me alone. You've noticed that in part following our own compass and in part specifically to advise you on key planned decisions. We have consistently elevated climate change and energy. We've looked at many other often-related concerns, such as food security and others, but our focus has been strong, especially as we've attempted to bring TBL thinking to the current transportation and land use decisions. How have we done on this count? Two quick notes, and apologies for a little bit of overlap with Matt McCray's presentation last week. First, climate. According to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, 2010 tied 2005 as the hottest year on record globally. In fact, the last 30-plus years have been above the 20th century average for global temperatures. And while we've had a bit of respite in the Northwest, parts of the US have been brutalized by climate change-related floods, hurricanes, tornadoes, and wildfires. Indeed, there have been more economic losses, economic losses, due to these disasters in the past year than ever before. So recent news has only continued to validate our emphasis in this area. Second, also briefly, energy. When the Commission started at the end of 2007, the very first group reading that we did in order to get up to speed on our collective task was the 2007 Portland Peak Oil Report. Now, I want to be clear, it wasn't as fashionable then to talk about energy security, especially related to petroleum. And in fact, for the decade or so before the Commission started, average prices for petroleum were under $30 a barrel. They have been under $80, sorry, over $80 a barrel since then, and above $100 a barrel several times. I guess, to put it more bluntly, gas was $2, now it's $4. And in fact, even in inflation-adjusted terms, we have never been not just where we are today, but where we've now been for several years. Not even in the oil crises of the 1970s, when nationally we still produced the majority of the oil we used. Now, it might seem that I'm crossing a line here. Am I saying that our crystal ball is better than other Commission's crystal balls? Well, I will let you judge for yourself. It may seem that I'm acting on behalf of my Commission like that annoying child who says, "Yes, yes, you love all of your children, but we're the smart one." That's not what I'm saying. But I'm reminding you that we've worked hard to hold you in good stead on these key points on climate and energy, and that we've succeeded in these areas where we focused. And if that means promoting my Commission, then so be it. They've worked hard and done really good work on your behalf. Now, why this now? Why do I make these points right now, coming into these decisions on transportation and land use? Aren't these the usual long-run concerns that our Commission addresses? Well, actually, I'm doing this because many of you, several councilors in particular, have rightly pushed back and told us, rightly, to talk about how these long-run concerns actually weigh in on us in the short run. My point in bringing them back today is that, in many ways, the long run is here. The decisions we make on Envision Eugene, MX, and the Transportation System Plan are going to matter to people's lives not just in 30 years, or 20, but in 10, or even five. So that's the setting. As we promise to return to speak with you regularly over the coming year, and on behalf of the entire Sustainability Commission, thank you, and I look forward to discussing the work plan with you.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear you're going to be coming back more often. I don't see anyone who wants to...okay. Andrea?
I'm sure Ellen has a lot to say, but I think she is just having to...
Huh?
So I just wanted to start by thanking you for doing the plan. Just kind of, we got this just now, and I was just kind of looking at it. I just would wonder what your thoughts are when I see that you didn't complete...I mean, you did a lot, and I'm not trying to pick out what you didn't do, but I just have a question about the food security plan. How would that, how would you envision that happening if it were funded?
Oh, if it were funded? Let's see. Well, this is an area that we heard a great deal from community members on in the first couple of years, especially the first year the Commission was around. And this essentially has moved to staff, and we're more or less in an oversight capacity on that. That's why it has been moved down. And since you guys have more transportation and land use decisions than food decisions on your agenda for the coming year, that's why it has moved down in priority. Off the top of my head, I don't have a good sense of that. I'm going to actually ask Sean, I don't know if you want to speak to it. I'm sorry to pick on Sean, but Sean Bowles has been the person who's provided the most contact with the food security issue for the Commission. So if it were funded, what would the first things you could do?
Can you hear me?
That's for the folks at home.
Oh, hello, folks at home, and Josh's children. Hello.
Thanks, Sean.
I think that one of the next steps, from our perspective, is to put some flesh on the bones. What we had was just the scoping report, and now we want to flesh that scoping report out. I don't know that we're going to do that just with the resources of the city. I'm thinking, and this is sort of forecasting, a relationship with the county, where food is increasingly an issue for them, and with the city of Springfield. So I'm looking at a joint jurisdictional approach to regional food security issues. I would also say that there are some implications of food security that overlap the Envision Eugene industrial expansion proposal, in that we know that the valley provides us with a basis for production, preparation, and distribution of foodstuffs that can add back to the economic value of the community and provide reasonable set of jobs. So those two coming together, I think, is where the nexus is going to be for us. Sorry to be so fuzzy, but that's about as much as we know about it at the moment.
Kathy, do you want to say something?
I'm glad you're here, Sean. A specific place where food security may come up in the short term, as overlapping with our work plan, is in looking at zoning issues associated with prime agricultural land and some of the proposals that may be coming before you for dealing with the need for industrial land in the community, but also the need to address long-term food security. And so that's an area where we may be able to be a resource and advisory committee as well.
Thank you very much for your answers. It definitely is fuzzy. You know, when I think about some of the conversations that I've heard and conversations that I've had out in the community, that definitely is going to be a challenging decision when that comes up. Thank you.
George Poling?
Thank you. And first of all, let me start out by saying, I think we all agree that as a society, we need to walk softly upon the earth and take care of it. I appreciate all the hard work that you've done, the work plan, the emails that come out, the memos, everything. I do have a question, though, on the one that we just got handed to us before the meeting, the Sustainability Commission staff report, excuse me, dated August 24, about the next to the last paragraph, the triple bottom line, paragraph four, number two, says, "Review the city's rental housing code program." And then in the matrix that you had attached, because Attachment A in our packet should be page 44, for equity, i.e. our PTO, it says, "Support rental housing code provisions for energy efficiency." What exactly is the ultimate goal that the Sustainability Commission is looking at with those two bullet points?
Yeah, great question, and I'll start and then jump in if I miss anything here. First of all, the rental housing issue, just because it has come up for you guys, has floated onto our agenda, and we have some materials for that, and we're intending to get to it either in our meeting that's tonight or next month's meeting. The, I guess, the overarching goal is that there's now very widespread understanding of the economic opportunity and energy efficiency in buildings. And there's also a widespread understanding that this, that energy prices disproportionately affect, you know, most vulnerable households economically. So figuring out how disproportionately to get at rental housing and reduce the burden, the economic burden, on households that often don't have an option but to rent is the goal there. So it's, there's a lot of overlap between economic and social equity concerns.
Well, I have a little bit of a problem with that, because when we first started the discussions about the rental housing code, we had a very narrow and specific purpose for that code, and that was health and safety issues. And it was plumbing, and electrical, and like, structural, and we, at the time when we first started discussing it, mold was still being discussed in research, and we added that at a later time. One of the main points during the discussion was that, this was all we were going to add to it.
Mission creep.
And that the reason we wanted to make sure it was narrow and specific, because in the future, we didn't want other things being brought in that weren't addressing the health and safety of renters. And I'm all for energy efficiency, but I don't believe that the rental housing code is a place to legislate energy efficiency. I think it's a bad move. I think it might even cause some damage to the rental housing code in the future. So, and I don't know if I need to put it in a form of a motion to have them withdraw that from their work plan or not, but I don't think, no offense, but I don't think you should be spending your time looking into that. It's not part of the rental housing code's primary purpose.
And first of all, let me thank you for that sense of focus, because our work plan is so broad that if there are places where we would be acting, you know, beyond the scope that, you know, where you guys would be taking our advisory role into account, that actually is very helpful. So, thank you. But I don't know if, I can't speak to the motion yet.
Wait till, are you through?
Yeah, like I said, and I may put a motion out.
But you're through with this round. So Ellen, you're on the list next, so go ahead.
So my understanding of that wasn't that it was to add energy efficiency provisions to the rental housing code, because I agree with you, the rental housing code is about health and safety issues. I think that the focus of the Sustainability Commission should be, and I think was intended to be, hard to tell from eight words, is that those provisions that relate to health and safety that also have a component of energy efficiency, such as windows, that are a safety issue and a health issue, but also are an energy efficiency issue needed to be highlighted and added to, and add to the rationale for having those things done, one of the things that would be done would be energy efficiency. But it's not, and I don't think you need a motion, because I think it's clear after this conversation, to add energy efficiency measures as something that someone could complain about within the rental housing code to then get fixed and legislated through the complaint process. That's not the purpose. So it's really finding the nexus between the health and safety issues within the rental housing code, such as windows, and relating them to energy efficiency and making that nexus clearer, as opposed to saying, "You have to do energy efficiency in rental housing code."
Oops, sorry.
So having said that, I want to thank the Chairs for the good work this last year, and Babe, and Matt for the excellent staff work. I asked to add these, the Sustainability Commission staff report this morning. We just started this as a function, there's only been two of these. So I think this is, I think that the council would like to see as well. So right now, you send this to the Sustainability Commission, but I think in that, you could CC the council, and they could look at it if they choose to see that, that's something they want to read. But I think it's a good way to keep abreast of what's going on with the Sustainability Commission in a succinct fashion, which is why we did it. And I really appreciate the format of this work plan. It's different than other work plans that we've seen. It's more matrix-oriented and more bullet-oriented. It does lend to a quick glance and see the inner relationships to stuff, but it does present problems like one that just came up, which is, in seven words, you can't really say exactly what you mean and be super clear. In terms of priorities, I think the priorities that are identified here are correct. The ones that have the H's across them are the high-party ones, and the ones that have the M's are medium, and the L's are low. And I think that the MX and the Ped Bike Plan and the CEAP are really critical ones that are coming up, as well as, in the short term, the Transportation System Plan, TSP, that'll be going on.
Mike?
Thank you, Betty. I appreciate as well all the work from staff and the Chairs and from the committee. It's quite a bit of work to create a work plan like this, and it's ambitious, and I applaud you for it. And I also appreciate Josh's reminder of our, the importance of our fidelity to our kind of 30,000-foot overarching goals about some of the issues involved here. Would also, though, like to say that, as councilors, we have fidelity to other goals and other responsibilities that we have to take into consideration as well, as I'm sure you'd know. And one of the things I wanted to bring up is how we process the information that you bring us in, how you're going to develop and come back to us more frequently with that information for assistance with our decision-making, and we appreciate it very much. But the little pieces that start to concern me are like the ones in the first paragraph of the first page of Attachment A, where it reads that, and forgive me, I'm getting blind here. "The goals specific to reducing greenhouse gas emissions and fossil fuels use..." I want to find the specific. "...embodied in the Community Climate and Energy Action Plan approved by council in 2010." My recollection is that we accepted that and not approved. And that may be semantic to a lot of people, but to me, there's a broader conversation around each of these pieces that we need to have, and we had that when we had it brought to us, that it wasn't approved. So that's a different level of validation of all of the pieces. And I remember the conversation and saying that there is a great deal of stuff in here that is very smart that we should do. And I think everybody wants to make the wisest, most, you know, fore-reaching sorts of decisions. But we have to weigh that against some of the current costs and some of the implications of those decisions, like's been brought up here by George today with regard to the rental housing code. So one of the things I asked for was economic analysis or understanding of economic impact on some of the decision-making models, and not just how it will be much better in the future with a rosy prediction, but what's the effect on the current economic conditions around a particular decision? What will that mean in terms of potential harm as well? So I'm hoping that we can understand from a larger perspective that while we all agree on a lot of these goals, we have to be at council a little bit more specific about our decision-making, and we want to be able to take some of the policy considerations out and have good thorough information before we make those. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, just a few quick responses. Thank you for that, Councilor Clark. And first of all, I don't think anyone on the Commission has the intention of holding you to every line in the CEAP, which I have not yet committed to memory. I apologize for that. But that's, there's a lot of detail there. The second thing is, I do want to just point out where we're very much on the same page, and that is coming back on the economic messaging and making sure that we have fully played that out from the perspective of our Commission, because we maybe haven't done that enough in the past. I do want to say that in that particular paragraph and on that issue, actually, we don't really need to talk about whether the CEAP was approved, or endorsed, or noticed, or whatever. It doesn't particularly matter, because you have a council-adopted goal to help the community reduce fossil fuel use by 50% by 2030. So there's that goal already that looms over decision-making. So on that particular point, at least, we're on the same page.
With my last seven, that was kind of my point, is that we have fidelity to those larger goals, certainly, but that, the specific policy changes that go into accomplishing those are subject to some good discussion at the table, I would think.
George Brown?
Thank you. This is good discussion. A couple of my questions are already answered by the previous discussion. I've had a couple of questions about, I'm looking at the matrix that was Attachment A in our packet, and I'm looking under MX, and the first box says, "Review proposed West 11th MX corridor plan and synthesize recommendations to the council." When can we expect to see the analysis and the recommendations?
So we have, I won't have a specific answer for you now, other than to say soon. I think part of this is that we have worked really hard to coordinate with the Planning Commission, just acknowledging that we and they together have, you know, as a collective bailiwick, a whole bunch of integrated transportation and land use issues. So this is really about our, I think, our coordination with them and trying, to the fullest extent possible, to speak with one voice on that count. But our intention is to do it in a timely manner, so maybe to give you advice before you have to make a decision.
And aren't we meeting later this month?
Yeah, we're meeting, I think, next week with Planning Commission members on CLUTAC.
All right. And kind of in the same, just going down the column a little bit more, under equity, joint statement with the Human Rights Commission on Transportation Equity. Is that being worked on actively right now? I'm kind of curious when we might see that also.
Actually, maybe Babe can speak to scheduling with the Human Rights Commission, but no work at the moment, yeah?
Yeah, it's not actively being worked on, but we want to build a stronger collaboration with the Human Rights Commission and its staff, and so we'll be meeting with them at some point in the near future to lay out some of these work plan items.
Okay.
And they've said they want to work with us, too, so we're not just being pushy in this case.
All right. Well, and then just right under that, it says, "Review economic benefits. Articulate those in human terms." Well, that will probably just be a part of the other two recommendations, I imagine.
Yeah. Well, and just, yes, and just a brief comment on the reason that's there. One of the themes that came up at our retreat to generate the work plan was, I mean, I only alluded to this briefly, was that we have spoken on a number of issues, but haven't really had a chance to talk about the economic side of our recommendations enough.
Sure.
And so that's, I mean, just echoing what Councilor Clark said as well.
Well, no, I think that'd be good if you could include those analyses.
Yeah, there are a number of us...
To the best of your ability.
Yeah.
I mean, it's kind of like a crystal ball, trying to predict economies in the future, but...
Yeah, but there are, I mean, actually, quite a few Planning Commission members, not just myself, who either are in the private sector or have previous private sector experience and who have thought about economic policymaking so good.
Have some experience, yeah. Okay. Well, that's good. It's very ambitious, and it's all very important, you know, important things. So I look forward to your reports. Thank you.
Yeah.
Kathy?
Thank you. I just wanted to make note of that conversation about the rental housing code, I hope is actually exactly the kind of conversation we're able to have in the coming year when we're here more frequently to learn and figure out how's the best way to meet the city's long-term sustainability goals. I hope you will welcome us as not just sort of reacting to specific questions, but as an advocate for urgency about those long-range issues around sustainability that are embedded in the pillars in Envision Eugene, that we can help play the role of offering where we see connections. You may, in some times, you may not like that, and you'll say, "Well, don't go there." But hopefully, through the increased communication, we will find more opportunities to turn those community-wide values that are in Envision Eugene, that are very aligned with the Sustainability Commission's values, into really specific actions. And if, you know, the rental housing code now is not the place, we hope we'll find lots of places where we can work together to make those goals come forward.
Thank you. Pat?
Thank you, Madam President. Kathy, congratulations.
Thanks.
Looking forward to your next year, I suspect. Good work, you guys. I, you know, I was at the Human Rights Commission meeting last night, and coincidentally, they said they don't want to work with you guys at all.
That's okay, we'll still go. We'll still go.
Don't give me a nasty look about you. It did come up as actually a part of the Human Rights Commission's goal for the year, or their work plan for the year, is to work closely with the Sustainable Commission. A couple of comments. One on food sustainability. I realize that that's not a major part of the work plan, but the human condition is absolutely something we should all be aware of. And while we do have broader goals as far as sustainability is concerned, global, regional goals as far as sustainability is concerned, I hope we don't lose track of... goals as far as sustainability is concerned, I hope we don't lose track of the local human condition. A lot of work has been done on food sustainability by the not-for-profit sector, by Food for Lane County, and by this council, as a matter of fact. Recently, a poll was taken by the Lindholm Company that asking about food security and the importance of food security in Lane County, and the numbers are astounding.
Yes.
Eighty-three percent of the people in Lane County are strongly in favor of this council supporting food security. In particular, as it does surrounds the community gardens, and I see Michael Kinnison sitting in the audience. Michael is working with ABC and Oak Ridge downtown on food sustainability. I think we all need to keep a very close eye on the future. Regarding rental housing code, I think everything's been said. I was looking for a little more clarification on what Councilor Zelenka said, suggesting that perhaps Councilor Pauling wouldn't need a motion after the conversation that we had. And I'm not sure that I got the part of the conversation that precludes a motion by Councilor Pauling. You were saying that weatherization's not being suggested means to complain about the housing code, other than as it refers to health and safety. And you mentioned windows a couple of times, and I'm trying to piece that together in my mind, how that closely relates to how the Sustainability Commission can in any way work on the rental housing code in terms of health and safety.
Well, I suggest that if he makes the motion, we discuss it then.
Well, I suggest that I continue discussing the analysis. So the—so I am curious to hear, you know, a little bit more closely what it is that is being prescribed by the Sustainability Commission as far as weatherization and the rental housing code.
We haven't had our conversation yet, right?
I will look forward to discussing that with the show there for motion.
Yeah, well, and this is a quick one. Nothing's being prescribed right now. The just prima facie reasons to examine this in some detail are that energy efficiency is, you know, far and away the lowest-cost marginal resource for electricity and for other—you know, for other energy. So this is one of those opportunities. I actually wasn't aware of the points that Councilor Pauling brought up, and obviously, if you have some scope creep in what was originally on your agenda on that point, you know, that's a council decision. But it's one of those times where if there is an opportunity, if there's a high-leverage opportunity in an area that we have tracked in detail, we don't want to, you know, miss the opportunity to bring that up to you, that's all.
Thank you, Josh. And clearly, weatherization is extremely important, and we need to focus any attention that we can on it, as long as we're keeping within our particular purview on it.
Taking the privilege of sitting here, I think that anything that you think of, you can discuss and bring to us, and we don't—you are an advisory commission, not a decision-making commission. And if you think something is related to sustainability, I think we'd be glad to hear—it's from my point of view, we'd be glad to hear about it. Chris is next.
Thank you. I appreciate it whenever a committee provokes thinking on our part. I think that's always a good thing. And so I appreciate the conversation. And just to be explicit on what's been raised by the other side of the table, the council has had a lot of discussion and will continue to have a lot of discussion about the degree to which we encourage versus enforce sustainability. I mean, it's an ongoing conversation because it's a very delicate issue. And I think that's really what causes us to really want to be very clear on the degree to which the Sustainability Commission also recognizes that delicate balance between encouraging and incentivizing versus enforcing and regulating. And so a rental housing code, we would see as an enforcement rule. It's regulatory. And so the first question we would ask is, if the Sustainability Commission wants to be involved in an enforcement or a code-related issue, is that—I don't know whether it's scope creep or whether it's something where we would go, this is at that line, where we need to figure out where we are as a council, and you're helping us, obviously. But I think explicitly what we're saying is, we're still in the—we want sustainability to be more at the encouragement, reinforcement, incentivizing, rather than the enforcement, regulating. And so I think that's what's motivating people to say, “We really intended the housing code to be about safety and health, because you can create code and enforcement, and everyone can understand why you're doing it.” That doesn't mean we don't want to incentivize, encourage, support, help, whatever, to have people do that. I mean, E-Web has a great weatherization program, which I think is a model in terms of underwriting those kinds of very important things to do. And whatever we could do in the context of the Sustainability Commission for the rental housing area to encourage or incentivize or help that, I think you wouldn't have any resistance on this group at all. It's just what are the code implications? And that, I think, is what causes people to start going, “Ooh, we're still talking about that. We're still figuring out what that is.” So just the fact that we don't want to go into a code mode doesn't mean we're not supportive. It just means we haven't talked about it enough. And when Allen talks about finding a nexus, I think a nexus is great as long as the nexus is clear that we're not going to a code-related mechanism. We can be as supportive and as thoughtful and as incentivizing as we want to be, but we just don't want to go there yet until we're all comfortable that we're there. And I think you get that. I think that's what you're hearing.
Yeah, that's helpful.
Thank you. Now, I have three people for a second round, Andrea, Allen, and Mike. Did I miss anyone? Andrea's next, then.
Thank you. So this is good stuff. This is good conversation. I just kind of had some generalized comments about all of the commissions and boards that we are—that are sitting advisory to the city council. This is one of the opportunities that the Sustainability Commission has to come forward and tell us what they would like to do. This is our opportunity to say, “Don't go there.” And I think that—I think that, you know, that happens with all of our boards of commissions at some point in time. I can remember being on the Human Rights Commission and, you know, things going sideways many a time. And so I'm okay with, you know, you coming up and bringing this to us. I think it's good. I mean, you guys are thinking about things outside the box, and that's kind of what we—I like personally, because I don't think of everything. I'm not a certified smart person like Chris.
Oh, I'm not, yeah.
But I do appreciate the conversation. I do think that, you know, if there was any opportunity to get—to get more meat on the bones for the food—for the—can't even think of what it is now—the food issue.
Beans on the vine. Beans on the vine.
Thank you. I would appreciate it, because personally, you know, in a lot of this—I mean, there's numbers that come out every day about hunger and about lack of people's access to good food, and I think the Willamette Valley is a perfect place to grow food. So definitely, if there was an opportunity for that, I'd be interested in seeing more of what you could do. And the other only thing—it was kind of a cross-pollination of the Transportation Plan that we had last week of the presentation, because the 20-minute neighborhood, again, kind of pops out to me, you know, and it's—and here's another point where this is advisory. And it'd be great to think that we could encourage businesses to grow the way we want, and that we could encourage the development that we want and the types that we want. But the reality is, we can't. And so I don't know, and I'm glad to hear that you're working with the Planning Commission, because I think that that really—the zoning issue is the code—is the nexus for that. You know, we talk about codes and we talk about zoning. I think that that really is where we can get to encouraging the kind of development that we want. And I would like to know if—you know, this is a good conversation around weatherization. So on your webpage or is it on the city page, is there any links to these things, like the E-Web window plan or the LRAPA, you know, wood stove replacement that they're doing out in Oak Ridge? I mean, there's a lot of different—there's a lot of different information out there, and I think that that would be a good place for people to go to. I mean, is that something that you guys kind of have looked at, or is it already being done and I just haven't seen it?
Good question. It's not specifically on the Sustainability homepage, but we can certainly look to include that—those relevant links.
I mean, I think that would be a great place for people to start. I mean, if you wanted to see if that was a possibility, because I think that there are people looking different places, and I think as much information that we can get out there about these programs that people can take care—take on their own initiative, it'd be great.
And just a quick point on that. I don't know how much time would be appropriate for the Sustainability Commission to collect those things, but as we look at, you know, this particular issue in the broader context, for example, of Envision Eugene, remember, there's quite a bit in there in a couple of the pillars on—you know, in the climate and energy pillar in particular, on energy efficiency in buildings as we, you know, look ahead to the continued transformation of our building stock. And so maybe acknowledging what Councilor Pryor said, apart from, you know, new regulations, there are all sorts of things that the city can do to encourage and disseminate information on these things. Not all landowners, not all homeowners, know about the local, state, and federal incentives on energy efficiency, including the ones you mentioned.
That was more of a question to staff, because I really think that's something that the city could do as service to the community. Thank you.
Allen?
So one of the roles of the Sustainability Commission that's evolved over time is really about connecting the dots. We have a lot of dots going on in the city, and they're not all connected. And they interrelate quite a bit, and those interrelationships are things that the Sustainability Commission wants to bring to light. And so different programs that the city has going on at the same time don't necessarily link up together. And specifically with regard to rental weather—our residential weatherization programs, broken windows or leaking—windows that aren't safe are also an energy issue. And so also caulking and holes in walls are a health issue that relate to letting water in and creating mold problems and heating problems that are related to the rental housing code. What's missing there is there linkage back to the energy part of it. Not to say that you mandate the energy efficiency through that, but it's through that health and safety part of the windows and caulking, for instance, are two good examples, that you could add to the rationale that says, “One of the other reasons we do this is because of the energy savings,” and it will allow us to—and I think none of us really thought about it until this conversation, which is good—that we could relate the rental housing program to the E-Web program better. I don't even know if they do that at all, whether or not—that when they talk about windows, they can talk to E-Web about getting more efficient windows at the same time that they're replacing them or fixing them. So it's that kind of nexus stuff that is where this is going, as opposed to mandating through code, energy efficiency measures. We have that through the building code in other places, and this isn't the appropriate place to do it. On the cost-benefit, I think one of the things Josh said early on was focusing—the Sustainability Commission is going to focus in on the economic aspects of it. One of the things that—one of the famous curves that came out a couple of years ago is called the Mackenzie Curve, that tried to see what measures would it take for the United States to get to—to keep that 350 parts per million, which is the threshold for climate change. And what they did is they went through and they listed them all and costed them out. And what they came to was, on a grand scale, all of the different things you have, you could meet that goal cost-effectively, meaning you could save money for people by doing that and still meet the goal. It's not necessarily so, and in fact, the Mackenzie report says it's not correct to say that achieving climate change as a cost, it actually ends up being a benefit. Things like energy efficiency and MPG increases and things like that are actually benefit to put money in people's projects. Only things we saw in the Green Lane connection that we had was that they really wanted to still come back and focus on that and come back to the community about ways that businesses could save energy by being more sustainable and talking about energy efficiency and other things like that.
Oh, your time was exactly right.
But you lost me at hello.
Lost me at hello.
Mike is next. Oh, you wanted to come.
I want to take off on what Allen was saying.
Oh, please, please, go ahead.
Maybe what will happen is that'll further—
I was going to go on what Andrea said, but go ahead. No, please. No, I—the one sentence response is that, “If at any point we lose you at hello, please feel free to reach out to our commission to talk one-on-one or, you know, in small group settings, we're friendly there, too.” But, you know, this is—you know, a lot of what we provide you with is often, you know, some little snapshot of something that we've spent hours or—we've spent hours or maybe a couple of months assembling, so, you know, it won't always be as well explained. So please feel free to prompt us on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, it's your turn now.
Thank you. Going off of something Allen said and kind of tying it in with Chris and drilling down on what I said before, I want to show you something here. There's a certain extent to which the work of the Sustainability Commission can't help but be cheerleader-like in some ways, advocating for a particular position, okay? What I'm asking for, though, is there are a lot of concrete policy decisions that we're going to make with your advice, that what I'm hoping is that we don't just hear the benefits and the cheerleading side of that of that information. Where Allen will propose that, long-term, all of the decisions will be good ones if we're taking that into consideration. But your chart here, for example, says, “Articulate economic benefits and implications,” where my hope would be—this would say, “Articulate economic impacts, short run and long run,” because I don't want to hear just about the benefits. I want to hear about the short-term costs. If we're talking, for example, about MX, you say, “Review economic benefits,” and then articulate those in other formats. But what we're not talking about are the are the economic costs to the local businesses, to the real estate that needs to be purchased along the route, and where that money comes from and what it might go to instead, and all of the other pieces that we have to consider. What we're looking for is, help us with as much information about costs and economic impact as possible, not just the benefits. And I think, again, it's more of a short-run, long-run sort of scenario, where conversion to buying wind-generated power, for example, might cost—I don't even know—five or six times as much as natural gas-generated power.
It's actually cheaper.
Well, my point was—I'm just trying to draw on an example, where it might be much more expensive than hydro-generated power, for example. But in the long run, here are the other impacts. But we want to make sure we have all the short-run costs associated with that as well, so that we make better decisions. Thank you.
I have to say something before I go. I just have to say, “Long run, I think we want to continue to exist and to breathe and to eat decent food and so forth.” Josh?
Yeah. Okay. So thank you so much for this feedback. It's actually very, very helpful. Three really quick comments and then I should probably close in on wrapping up here. Actually, on MX, I think you are hearing a great deal about the costs. In fact, I think you're hearing about almost nothing but the costs, and I think the reason that it's on our agenda is to do a better job of articulating short, medium, and long-term benefits. So that's just—goodness, I'm hearing a lot about the—I can't go anywhere without hearing about the costs of MX. Second, on a very serious, specific note, that should just insert the word—we should just insert the word “net”—net economic benefits, which could be positive or negative. And we're always going to speak to you in terms of net—in terms of net economic benefits. But that point's well taken. We shouldn't just be cheerleading. I think the subtler thing here, other than inserting one three-letter word to fix that sentence, that's harder, is that one of the reasons you hear from us about the long-term is that some of these challenges look very, very different, depending on what timeframe for decision-making you take. Some decisions look terrible if you look out five years and look great if you look out 20, and vice versa, right? So a big part of what we've been trying to do is—and the reason that the comments about crystal balls are so apropos is that a lot of this is trying to say, “Okay, if we're going to think really far in the future—or even just 20 years—as we're doing with Envision Eugene, then we have to do a good job of talking about what the world is like 20 years out, or we're shortchanging that vision, and we're shortchanging how it involves our decision.” Every single person around the table has made a decision that had a 20-year timeframe. I mean, you've had kids, you've pursued education, you've bought a house. We're familiar with those things. Bringing them into public policy discussions is a big challenge, and that's, I think, where —that's a big part of what our role is.
Thank you. We're out of time, but I get to say something.
A refreshing change.
I think what sustainability is all about is long-term. And also, when you talk about cost, how much—you need to think how much it's worth. How much is it worth for your child to breathe clean air and drink clean water, for example? Sometimes a cost isn't the main thing. And thank you very much for—and of course, you are aware, if any one of us says something that is not necessarily the opinion of the entire group, we don't always agree completely.
It's the same for us, even me.
Do you have a last word?
Yeah.
Oh, you want to make the move? Oh, I'm sorry. George wants to make the motion.
I move to approve the Sustainability Commission FY12 work plan.
And as acting vice chair, I guess. I second the motion, but I want to be recognized.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, and now George wants to be recognized.
I'd like to propose a substitute motion, request changes to the work plan before approval, specifically the item referenced, the rental housing code.
Second.
If I could speak to that real quickly.
Yes.
Bottom line on that—not the triple bottom line, but the bottom line is, now it does say revisions, support rental housing code revisions. I understand what Allen was saying, and I agree and understand the nexus that he's trying to make, but it concerns me that down the line somewhere, someone's going to see that and say—and, you know, we may have a complete turnover of the Sustainability Commission. Someone will see that and say, “Oh, we're supposed to be working on making revisions.” So if you could come back with rewording on that somehow to— So if you could come back with rewording on that somehow, to condense down real short what Alan was trying to say, I think that'd be okay.
I think we could do that.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. And so, acknowledge that change.
We didn't vote on the motion, so we'll vote on the, is there any more discussion of the substitute motion, Alan?
Just to clarify what that means, so, this is approval, and that part of it is to be brought back to council for review? You're not holding up the entire approval?
Well, the way, the request changes to work plan before approval, so...
So approval of the work plan except for that item, which comes back to the council? Is that what you're intending to mean?
That is the motion that I put out.
So you're not approving the work plan at all?
Not until that's changed.
Oh, okay, then I won't vote for it.
Any other discussion? Andrea?
So I just need some clarification on this. So there's a motion to approve the work plan, and then you're putting a motion forward to...
A substitute motion.
Substitute motion.
Request changes to the work plan before approval.
Is there any problem with putting this off until, or can we, is there a problem with putting the work plan off until revisions come back?
Not from our standpoint.
Okay.
I mean, I think, this is fine, because just given that, unless there are other changes, and this will allow me to put in the word net in front of economic benefit as well. I mean, like, if there are other changes.
Mike, then Alan.
Thank you. I would request the word impact as opposed to net benefit, but because net benefit assumes something...
Are you asking to change the motion? We have a motion right now.
He was mentioning that he was going to make that change as well, so I was instructing, but...
Well, it isn't in the motion.
And I was also going to then speak to the motion to say...
Okay, go ahead.
That having it, having it come back to us, which I think all of us are okay with, approving it with some minor changes, would probably be better than us having a split vote about the nature of it in the first place.
Alan?
I'm going to ask a friendly amendment, that we pull that item related to the rental housing code, that's specific, and have that brought back to council for review, and let the rest of the plan go forward. My issue with that is, is that when I look at our calendar, it's pretty packed until next year. Having this brought back may be tough to get into the calendar.
So are you willing to accept what he's...
No, because Josh has kicked out a couple of other changes that he wants to make to the housing...
Pat, you're next.
Hi, Cloud, I was going to suggest pretty much what Councilors Alenka suggested, that we go ahead and approve the work plan with the exception of this one item.
Well, if we want to do that, we vote down the substitute motion.
Yeah, so I did have a substitute motion, but it kind of hended on...
We already have a substitute.
You can't amend the amendment.
Amending his...
You're going to amend the substitute motion, okay.
But depending on what the manager said about the calendar, I mean, if, we can bring this back in a timely fashion, but when I look at the calendar, it's, there are very many openings until next year.
It can almost be done on a consent calendar.
Yeah.
What I was going to say is, I wouldn't suggest another work session if it's a change in that particular item, and it could be a couple of changes on the, in wording, we would either bring it back, probably not consent, but we'd bring it back on just a regular agenda item for action, as opposed to another work session to talk about it.
Because the...
And we can insert that at any particular council meeting.
Okay, that makes me feel okay, because the Sustainability Commission actually meets tonight, and they can work on those revisions and crank them out in a very timely fashion.
If we vote, if we vote.
So I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay.
With that understanding.
We are running out of time, but if we, somebody have something else urgent to say?
I'm encouraging them to come back quickly.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll vote on the substitute motion now. All in favor of George's substitute motion?
We can do that.
Opposed? So we have passed the substitute motion.
Or the main motion.
You have to go...
Now we pass the main, that main motion as amended. All in favor?
We're approving it as the new motion now.
It's now the new motion.
Yeah, do that when you have a substitute.
So that completes this section of our meeting. Thank you very much for coming. And the next item is...
I know.
Thank you.
Once you've replaced it, then you have to vote.
Next, we're going to talk about neighborhood association boundaries.
Glenn does ask us.
I remember he treats them both as similar.
Glenn has always asked us to do it twice.
We did it twice.
That way it's double secret.
So John?
Just in case.
Are you going to call Mike up?
Yeah, Mike.
Thank you. Come on up.
The meeting is not over yet. We have another item.
Yeah.
We got John on the, another John on the other side.
What are you trying to...
Thank you. I don't get to wear them very often. It only took me four times to tie it so I got it right.
Thank you very much, Alan. In the interest of tying all this, turn over to Michael, and we'll go from there.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Michael Kinnison, manager of the Neighborhood Services Program, and thank you, councilors, for giving us some time to come and speak to you about proposed changes to the Cal Young Neighborhood Association boundary. I have with me here today John Jaworski, who was our de facto chair of the Boundary Revision Committee that led the process we're going to talk about today, and is currently the new chair of the newly-formed Northeast Neighbors that you'll learn about today as well. And so John and I are going to co-present and are here to both answer any questions that you may have. So the Cal Young Neighborhood Association, the size and configuration of that boundary has proposed significant challenges to organizing, keeping informed, and sustaining the participation of the residents and property owners that live in that area for quite some time. And so, we're here to talk about a recommendation to reconfigure that boundary, and specifically to create two new neighborhood associations within that area, as well as a smaller reconfigured Cal Young Neighborhood Association. And what we're really here today specifically is asking a view, is to approve a motion that would take action on the, accepting the two new charter documents for those two new neighborhood associations on Mondays, at Monday's council meeting. Okay, so, let's start with a little bit of background, a little bit of context. This is not an entirely unique situation. Neighborhood associations' boundaries change, usually very modestly, if there's annexations adjacent to their boundary, those kinds of things. But we have had significant changes, and particularly in this area in the past. In 1978, the, what was known as the Willackinsy Area Neighborhood, which combined, if you can believe this, the Cal Young Neighborhood Association and the area that is now the Harlow Neighbors, was one neighborhood association. And the membership voted to split into Cal Young Neighborhood and Harlow Neighbors back in the late 70s. And we've actually had a neighborhood in the past, two areas combined. So the Jefferson West Side Neighbors, that area, it used to be represented by two neighborhood associations, and membership voted in the past to combine. So we've, you know, boundaries do change, but we've actually never undergone the process that we just went through for the Cal Young Neighborhood Association, in the sense that it wasn't initiated just by a vote of the membership. So we're going to talk to you about that. So we didn't do this in a vacuum, or arbitrarily, we have guidelines to follow. So in February of 2000, City Council approved boundary guidelines that were developed in consultation with our office, as well as the Neighborhood Leaders Council. And some of the highlights are that it's, the guidelines state that no neighborhood association should be smaller than 300 residential units and no more than 8% of the total city residential addresses. And at that time, it was about 5,000. It shouldn't be configured so that there's major barriers internally, divisions of highways and rivers and those kinds of things. Shouldn't be defined solely by an apartment complex, or one homeowner's association, or a gated community, so that you get some diversity within the neighborhood association, and that all residents are in only one association. And then it speaks to when should changes, or how should changes be initiated in a neighborhood association boundary? So, one, of course, is by membership vote, and I spoke to that, that that has occurred in the past. But it could also be considered as part of a strategy to reactivate a dormant association. So if you had a neighborhood that was having trouble staying active, and one of the reasons for that was believed to be the configuration or size of that boundary, it could be addressed at that time. There's also provision for a membership-initiated petition process. So you can have a group of neighbors within an existing neighborhood association that have energy around organizing themselves and carving out a new neighborhood association. There's a process for that. I don't believe that's ever been done before. And then, when the boundary simply is not consistent with the guidelines, it also says that's an appropriate time to consider the boundaries. And that's where we were with the Cal Young Neighborhood Association. And then it says that if, how, and when those changes occur, under, other than by membership vote, would be worked out by a committee, and that committee would be comprised of the neighborhood association's board, neighborhood leaders council representatives, my, our office, neighborhood services, and the city councilors that are representing that area. So that's what we've done with Cal Young, and, but, my office is, in my office, I should say, is responsible for ensuring that we comply with, all the neighborhoods comply with these guidelines. And so I do an annual report and send you a memo on the activity of neighborhood associations every year, and in there we note who is and who isn't compliant with the boundary guidelines. And then it's our responsibility to approach the neighborhood and talk about if that's an issue and how we should proceed. So in 2010, when we did that, in addition to the Cal Young Neighborhood Association, Active Bethel Citizens, Santa Clara Community Organization, and the Harlow Neighbors were not consistent with either the size or the boundary configuration criteria. So you may ask then, well, why did we go with Cal Young first? And one reason for that is, it, as you'll see, it's a fairly time-consuming process, so it's not something we could just jump in both feet and get all neighborhoods going at once. We had never really done it, at least in my office, through this process, so we felt like this would be a good learning experience, a pilot, if you will. And then it was just opportunistic. At the time, in late 2010, Cal Young Neighborhood Association was struggling. We were down to about two board members, John being one of them. There was a question whether the group would even be able to continue, and John and I both agreed that the size of the neighborhood was an issue for them, and this was really a good time to, let's try this, let's take a look at it. And so the first step was John went out and he recruited new, a new board, so we had good participation by a Cal Young Neighborhood Association board. And then, then the process got started. So let's just quickly take a look at the Cal Young boundary. It's a little difficult to see, so you can see the dark line here, goes all the way around. Harlow Neighbors is here. And it stretches all the way from the north, the UGB, south down to the Willamette River, along Coburg Road, and all the way over to I-5 on the east, and then back over on the west to the Willamette River. It's, if you recall, the guidelines say that shouldn't be, a neighborhood association shouldn't include more than 8% of residential addresses, so you can see there, we're nearly double in terms of exceeding that guideline. And we've got some major divisions there. So we've got Delta Highway here, and we've got Beltline here. And those are more than physical boundaries, they're almost psychological boundaries, or really boundaries, I think, to identity in a neighborhood. I mean, people don't, people don't relate to a lot to what are the issues, if you live north of the Beltline, a lot of the issues that might be occurring out on Good Pasture Island, or way to the south off of Country Club Road. So, so those physical barriers are important, too. Okay, so I think at this point, I'm going to hand off to John. He's going to talk to you about the process that we went through to make a recommendation, who was involved in that process, some of the outreach that was done, and then kind of talk through what the recommendation is, and make sure you're familiar with the boundaries that are being proposed. And then I'll be back just to talk briefly about next steps, and the rest of the time will be to answer any questions that you have.
Hi, I'm John Jaworski. Let me begin by saying that, as Mike has indicated, we are trying to follow and be pursuant to various city guidelines. The Boundary Revision Committee, as Mike has indicated, consisted of the following individuals, being the board, the two co-chairs of the NLC, city staff, as well as the councilors within the affected area of Cal Young. Now with that, when this was formed, it would also say that its role was primarily to make a recommendation on the boundary revisions to the city council. And it was somewhat vague on how it would do that, you know, how would they make that assessment, and how would that come about? And I'd like to speak a little bit to that, because this process was something new to us, and I think I'll walk you through some of that, because as many of us found out, it was much more intense than what we envisioned, but it was well worth it. In this process, we had over four general meetings of Cal Young. We had five Boundary Revision Committee meetings, which were meeting monthly. We had numerous area meetings, as well as other outreach efforts. And this was not a new process for Cal Young, as alluded to by Mike. When I looked back through the records, I found that in 2007, Cal Young, at a general meeting, was actually talking about the term they used then, splitting up. You know, and apparently that didn't go anywhere, but there was always some discussion of, the area's big, it doesn't relate to certain people, what's happening two and a half, three miles away, I don't really feel is my sort of thing. So the issues that Cal Young was having about a year ago, or a little over a year ago, prompted us to revisit this, because we were sort of getting desperate. So in October, the executive committee talked about this issue in 2010. How can we do this? What are ways to do this? And Mike was actually there. And then at a general assembly meeting on October 28th, we brought this issue to the board and said, we're having trouble getting people to participate, we're trying to look at, maybe it's better if we divided it up and had smaller neighborhood associations, and we might be participating in something which I was learning at the time, a SNAP program, to hopefully help out with this. That meeting ended, and it wasn't totally negative, and we actually had people come up and say, you know, if you're looking for board members and you're thinking about dividing up, I might be interested in that, because I live in this area and I don't think the other things relate to me. So in the next few months, we tried to put this board together, and we made it clear to them that they would be working with Cal Young on Cal Young issues, but at the same time, they would be participating on a Boundary Revision Committee, which we didn't know how much time this would take, but the purpose was to redraw these boundaries. And they all agreed to that. And then at our January 20th meeting, we put out a newsletter, and this is to all 11,000 residents, indicating this is what we were doing, this is what Cal Young looks like, and what is it, you know, what is our future, what do we want to do, et cetera. And Mike was also at that particular meeting, and he came up and he talked with us. At the end of that particular meeting, we elected the new full board, and we had a mission to move forward with the Boundary Revision Committee. The Boundary Revision Committee met thereafter, monthly, for the next five or so months. The initial meetings, when people first come together, it's always this way, there were people from the Neighborhood Leadership Council that had ideas of how the boundary should be, there was even discussion of aligning them with councilors' wards. And there were also all kinds of things that came forward, but as more and more information came out, the group generally agreed, why don't we have, since no one knew how to do this, a large participatory process? Why don't we go out and take a look at our neighborhood and see what the people want, what they feel are the neighborhoods, and what the boundaries might be? So the logical way to approach this, as you see on the map there, is Cal Young existed and had with it four board members and four area reps, one, two, three, and four. And based on the fact that because the Area 5 you see up there is within the guidelines of the city, it's south of the Beltline, which is a natural barrier, and it's west of Delta, we created an Area 5. We happened to have board people that lived in all of these areas, and we said to the board people, let's go out and let's try to see what we can do. And we even created a survey. Let's survey these people and see what we can come up with. Let them know what we're doing, because they've been informed, find out how long they've lived in that particular sub-area, 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5, what were their perceptions and issues of the neighborhood, what would make your neighborhood more livable, what were the boundaries, and if they were redrawn, how do you feel about that? You know, where do you spend time, walking, shopping, where do you do these things? We were utilizing that 20-minute concept that's been discussed. And try to find out if they're also interested in being on the boards of these new neighborhoods, would they participate in that, et cetera. Well, we did that process, and we utilized things to come up with, well, who are we going to contact? We used all the names and addresses we had from anyone who had ever tended to... We used all the names and addresses we had from anyone who had ever tended to Cal Young meetings as back as far as we could go. We used those that had participated in Cal Young surveys, as well as city surveys, and we had their emails, phone numbers. And then, we also used people we knew and all the neighborhood, what we call associations. In other words, like homeowners' associations, the project development management areas. Go to them and see, you know, who are the people in the area? Who can we talk to? Who puts on the garage sales in Crescent Village? Who does the big things down here? Who are the people that they know? We did this with several hundred contacts. We did this by emails, phone contacts, face-to-face, talking with them, doing the survey, walking the streets, and talking to neighbors that we saw out there if we couldn't find people in that area. More than two-thirds of all of these hundreds of contacts were actually by the phone, anywhere from 15 to 25 minutes discussing things with them. Once we had that particular information from these, we found that, "Why don't we try some other things?" And we followed this up with some area meetings. Like, in my area, we had a meeting in Area 1 and 2. You know, we had like 17 or 18 people that really wanted to work on it and might be interested in a board in Area 1, and a similar amount in Area 2. We followed up and had area meetings with just them. What we wanted to see was, what would they say differently when they're in a group now? Do they still have the same feelings? What do they think about boundaries? A lot of that was reiterated and became, you know, duplicative. But one of the things that surfaced is when they met, they started to say that Area 1 and 2 were really related to each other and maybe should be combined. We also found out that this happened in Areas 3 and 4, when they were talked to. Additionally, when you look at that map, Area 3 and 4 used to be the opposite. It used to be north-south rather than, east-west rather than north-south. But when we talked to the people, that line you see there, it was determined that it actually made more sense to be the other way, 3-4, because Cal Young Road presented somewhat of a similar barrier, but not a big one, to what went on there. So, there was that 3-4 that was presented. We went back with all of this information, and we said to the Boundary Revision Committee, "This is what we're finding. This is what we're doing, et cetera." And again, we said, "Well, we don't want to stop there. We have a general assembly meeting coming up on, at May 17th." So, we then went out to 11,000 people, and we talked about proposed neighborhood reorganization again. And we put this out to 11,000 people. We sent out the maps that we're talking about, the areas that we were considering, to every residential address within Cal Young. We had a very good meeting there. We also had a presentation on the 20 neighborhoods by the city. At that particular meeting afterwards, we broke out into those five groups that we've identified, and all the people that live in those areas met and talked about the same thing again, because these might be different people who hadn't either been phone contacted, et cetera. Similar issues came out there, plus what they wanted to see is things in their neighborhood that they wanted to see have done, or what we should do. And again, it was reiterated that 1 and 2 felt they should be combined, as well as 3 and 4. When we came back from that particular meeting, we went to the Boundary Revision Committee meeting, and on June 6th, we presented everything to them that we had. The Boundary Revision Committee meeting on June 6th said, "Okay, we're going to make a recommendation that we break up into three groups," which I believe is the next map. Didn't have names then, but this map shows names. But they said, "You know, we'll come up with an area that meets the city guidelines, which is north of Belt, of the Belt Line, west of Delta, and then the existing Cal Young would remain the same." So, we were creating two new neighborhood associations that met that particular criteria. So, then we said, "Well, what do we need to do next?" Well, during the summer, not the best time to work, we needed to go out, revitalize all these people, and have them come forward to work on interesting things, like a charter. And also, who are those that are now going to step forward and really be the board members, willing to participate in that particular area, et cetera? So, we worked through the summer. We came up with a charter, a slate of officers, and as you see here, the names of those particular organizations. What happened then is we said, "Okay, now we're going to go out again, and we now know what we're doing." So, we went out to the 11,000 people again for a September 22nd meeting. And in our newsletter, we defined the three areas, a large article on everything that's going on. And then, at the end, just to keep them informed, we delineated the two areas, indicated what the issues were that were raised, and showed what their proposed boards were, just so that everyone in Cal Young would know what they were. At this particular meeting, we then talked about what the recommendation of the Boundary Revision Committee meeting was. And what happened there, and it's actually surprised me, because we had a large meeting at this group.
Huge.
They voted to endorse the recommendation of the Boundary Revision Committee to revise the Cal Young neighborhood as follows. All lands south of Belt Line between the Willamette and Delta would become Good Pasture Island neighbors. All lands north of Belt Line to the urban growth boundary between the Willamette River and Game Farm Road would become Northeast Neighbors. And all lands south of Belt Line between Delta Highway and Coburg Road to remain the Cal Young Neighborhood Association.
John, that was, I believe, a unanimous?
There was not one dissenting vote, which actually-
Seventy, eighty, at least?
Yeah, we had, we had, I had counted that much, but we had 67 who signed the sheets. Not everybody signed the sheets, because some weren't coming in. And five minutes later, I was trying to remind them to sign their sheets and put down their emails, but they didn't, didn't do it. But it was a tremendous amount that showed up for this meeting. Now, following that meeting, the two groups got together for their organizational meetings. And that would have been Northeast Neighbors met, and we can do the next map, maybe. Northeast Neighbors is this map here. And as you can see on this map, that this group got together, and they unanimously elected their board and slate of officers, and they adopted their particular charter that was bailed for them after we went through, actually walked through the whole thing, phase by phase. And as you can see in Northeast Neighbors, it's an interesting neighborhood. It conforms to the city, 37, 32 residential addresses. It's under whatever the limitations are significantly. And it has, if you look at it, it meets the boundary requirements. It has, in a right-hand section there, it has a commercial area that's developing and retail. And of course, on the west side, Delta and Green Acres area, you have another commercial area. So, this area has some things that bring it together. It has Crescent, which was pretty much its east-west route, et cetera. And so, that's, that was happening there. In addition, Good Pasture, the next map, Good Pasture Island Neighbors met. It was a natural boundary, so it didn't have any like ones, or twos, or threes, or fours. It was everything that was south of the Belt Line and west of Delta. And in the northern section of it, it has most of the residential development, one major road going through it, being Good Pasture Road. It has its commercial retails, everything in the southern section, and a tremendous asset in Delta Ponds. We actually have with us today the Chair of Good Pasture Island Neighbors, Charlie Cole.
Behind you.
He went behind me, and he's probably with John Helmer, also a board member. John just left.
John just left.
Boy, okay. And so, and so, that happened. And basically, I guess what I would like to conclude with is, everyone seems to be really happy with what's going on. And the last area, of course, here is Cal Young. And Cal Young will remain Cal Young. They didn't have these other particular meetings. I don't know if Mike's going to go into this, because their current charter only allows them to do things in January. So, they have to wait until January to regain some of their board positions and revise their charter and have it adopted to reflect their new particular boundaries. I just think it's a good, a good process, and we had a lot of people involved. And I didn't know it would take this long.
Thanks, John. And a lot of those, a lot of that "we" he referred to in the outreach was a lot of John out there knocking on doors and calling people. So, just quickly, next, your next steps, he mentioned Cal Young. We'll be back, I'll be back with their, a new charter for Cal Young for you to approve in January. And we'll get all the new board members through our leader orientation that we'll do in February, so everybody's kind of up to speed on their roles and responsibilities. And then, our office will be having future discussions with those other neighborhoods that aren't consistent with the guidelines. So, the rest of the time, any questions you may have, we'd be happy to answer them.
That's really impressive. I have, so far, Mike, George, and Pat.
Thank you, Betty. I won't take too much more than to say that, as I mentioned when we had items last time, I think, that George and I were proud both to work with John and Mike and everybody on this. But really, much congratulations goes to John here, who really led this effort. And I think all of you can see now the amount of work he put into this. In the, you know, five years on council and years before that, participating, I don't think I've ever seen that many people at a neighborhood meeting, much less vote on anything unanimously at all. And that was, that was really impressive. And it's just really a tribute to the hard work that John and others did to get this together. And certainly, I, I hope you all support moving this forward.
George?
I couldn't have said it better.
And Pat?
You know, I can only say how impressed I am with the neighborhood program in general. My likes, congratulations. You've done an outstanding job. And this is just a testimony to how alert and quick it was, a long process. It quickly responded to the needs. And we have a similar situation in West Virginia, where we have a very varied neighborhood. There's no real energy right now with splitting it up. But knowing that it's a process, this is in place, and it's very well documented, it's really encouraging to me that if we decide to do this, that looks in time in the future, we don't have to break down on that. Well done. Absolutely.
Helen?
Yeah, I did have that, Michael. The neighborhood program and its effectiveness has just increased since you've been the head of it. So, congratulations to you. And neighborhoods in general have become more important, I think, and they've been re-energized. I think we've got, every single neighborhood now has got energy in them. Of course, it takes, sometimes it takes a good crisis in a neighborhood to get it going, but, you know, that's still a good reason to get going. And I just, John, I was just impressed with the amount of work you and everybody else did on this, and the stick-to-itness that it took to be able to pull that off. I think that's very impressive. Congratulations for pulling it off and getting unanimous vote. And I think you've got some good acronyms here. You've got C-Y-N-A, N squared, GIN. That's my favorite, GIN. That's a good one.
We can't wait to see the neighborhood logo.
I'm not sure what the drink of that choice is going to be for that neighborhood. I guess, Michael, what's so, so you briefly touched on this. So, are there other parts of the city that are going to have to go through this part? I know some of the, it seems like the older parts of the city had neighborhoods that are small, or like the part I'm in, you know? And then, and then as you get towards the newer neighborhoods, they're just big and huge.
Right. Yes. There's definitely the need out there in other areas I mentioned, and Councilor Farr referred to Active Bethel Citizens as one of the largest. As, I think, I think it's, it's-
It's bigger. It's like 15%.
Yeah, it's about, I, I'm, let's see, I actually have- Yeah, it's bigger than Cal Young. It's about nearly 12,000 addresses, so it's really big. What we'll do is, part of it, you can't force it. There has to be interest and energy there. I mean, as you can see, I mean, we could, this committee could get together and decide this is what the boundaries are going to be, but then we would probably end up with either A, areas that the people that live there might not resonate with, or there just would be areas that weren't active at all. So, part of it will be working with those groups to see who is interested in maybe taking that next step. But I'll be approaching each one of them. Harlow, which, we're starting to work with them on a strategic neighborhood assessment and planning, a SNAP, that's dealing with outreach for them, trying to get more people involved in the neighborhood association. One of the issues that they'll look at is, how does the size and configuration of their neighborhood affect who's involved? So, we'll have that conversation there, too. They're right, they're right at, they're just under 8%, so they're within the size limit, but they are bisected there by, it was at 105 at the southern area. So, we'll look at that and have the conversation, see what makes sense with the neighborhood.
George, will you make the motion?
Yes. I move to schedule action on the resolutions accepting the charter documents for two new neighborhood associations, Good Pasture Island Neighbors and Northeast Neighbors.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous at council, too.
Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Have to open up a consulting firm, call it. I'll get a unanimous vote or something.
Unanimous vote.
Yeah, unanimous vote.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I think that ends the business.
Our customer already.